February twenty. Oh, I think I'm gonna repeat that. But since you just started recording, okay, so it's nine o'clock and I would like to call to order the meeting of February twenty third, twenty twenty second. At this time, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have, next we have items that are not on the agenda. At this point, Janet will advise the public on how to, how they may participate during, during the public comment. Janet?
Oh, roll call? Yeah, first let's do a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, actually, yeah, roll call. Janet, can you do the roll call?
Yes, please. Commissioner Gupta?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Here.
Chair, sorry, Chair Ramirez?
Here.
And staff members presented by Fox and Monowitz and. All right, there you go. We'll next love, talk about public comment and how folks can participate during this time. Let me just let everybody know how this will work. For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will use the raised hand feature in order to organize any public comments. During the general public comment period and for each item on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raised hand feature to raise your hand to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Please note that members of the public must wait for my prompt in connection with each agenda item before using the raised hand function. For example, you cannot raise your hand at the beginning of the meeting for an item that is later in the meeting. When you hear your name called, I will prompt you to unmute your microphone and begin speaking. And for items not on the agenda, Chair, I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Okay, seeing that there, there's no one that wants to participate on the items not on the agenda. I will, unless there's an objection from the commissioners, I will stop public participation on that at this point. And then we can move on to the next item. We have a consent agenda. We have item number one and number two. For item number one, we have the minutes for the, for the meetings of January sixth and February nine. And at this time, and I'm sorry, and I know number two, so that we can set our agenda here. We have a resolution to make the findings that as a result of the continued COVID nineteen pandemic, a state of emergency declaration by Governor Newsom. A meeting in person for the meetings of the planning commission would present an imminent risk to the pop, to the health and the safety of attendees. So, do we have a?
May I, may I request that we postpone the minutes of February nine for further revision?
Sure, yeah, we can do that. So, on that note, then, will, does anyone want to make a motion for the second part, item number two?
I, I move that, that be approved, item two, and, and the revised minutes for January twenty six meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion and second. Janet, can you do a roll call?
Thank you. Commissioner Ketchum?
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Commissioner Gupta?
Hi.
Chair Ramirez?
Hi.
You consent.
Okay, next, we will move to the regular agenda. We are postponing item number three. So, for, for an determined meeting in the future. Then we have item number four. Janet, can you read that for the record?
No problem. We have item number four, which is Kathleen, I can't remember, sorry if I messed up your last name, or Winchester and Alexander Lee Rogers. Applicant Dennis Spiegel, file number PLN two zero two one dash zero 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 two nine. The location is four two four Summit Drive Emerald Lake Hills and our project planner this morning is Erica Adams. Erica?
I, one moment, please. This is what I want to do. Okay. All right, good morning, commissioners, members of the public. My name is Erica Adams. I'm with the Planning and Building Department. I'll be presenting PLN two thousand twenty one dash zero zero two nine. It is consideration of a design review permit and a non-conforming use permit and a grading permit to allow construction of a new two thousand six hundred and forty-four square foot, two-story, single-family residence with an attached two-car garage on a non-conforming six thousand two hundred and five square foot parcel at four thirty-four Summit Drive in the Emerald Lake Hills area of the county. The project includes construction of the house, removal of four trees and a grading permit for three hundred and five cubic yards. There are three permits required for this project. A non-conforming use permit is required to allow lot coverage of twenty eight point two five percent, or twenty five percent is the maximum floor area of two thousand and sixty-four. Six, sorry, six hundred and forty-four square feet, where two thousand four hundred square feet is the maximum. And a combined side yard setback of approximately sixteen feet, where twenty foot is the minimum required in the residential hillside zoning area. The zoning also includes design review and, as I said, a grading permit is, is required. The house is located at four three four Summit Drive in the county's unincorporated Emerald Lake Hills area. The zoning is RHDR, residential hillside design review. As you can see, the subject parcel is smaller than surrounding parcels. And I have here a couple photos of the existing residents. It's the front of the house and then that's the side with the garage in the back. This is a survey of the existing development on the parcel. And then here is the site plan of the proposed development on the parcel. You can see the house setbacks. And it's a little bit easier to see here with the, this is the landscape plan. But it's easy to see the encroachment on the sides there and the, the footprint of the house. Now I'll go through the the plans relatively quickly here. They have the floor plan of the first floor, which has the garage, living room and just some kitchen and a guest bed, bedroom. The upper area has decks and the additional bedrooms. It's the roof plan. A cross section of the house. And elevations, the top elevation would be the right side elevation. This is the front elevation. And then the rear elevation and then the left side elevation. The colors are light gray with some wood siding. And then to go back, the, the project that we're looking at today requires three permits, the design review, non-conforming use permit and a grading permit. The first permit, that's just a reminder of what the site plan looks like. First permit would be the design review permit. The project was heard at the July sixth, twenty twenty one Emerald Lake Hills Design Review Hearing and received a recommendation for approval. With that recommendation, it was also, we're but advised to the applicant that they make some modifications to better comply with zoning. The project was slightly revised. They've reduced forty-four square feet and, and corrected a height overage. The design review standards are in general here, what's here, and then the ones that were most relevant to the project would be that tree removal is minimized in, in that they are protecting the mature trees, some mature trees on the site. The grading and the, is, is minimal and the topography is not really altered with the design, the colors and materials blend with the natural setting and the roof is pitched. The second permit is for the non-conforming use permit to address areas where the project does not comply with the residential homes hillside zoning district. The, there are three non-conformities that are being addressed with this permit. The floor area, lot coverage and the side setback combinations. So, the, the non-conforming use permit findings are, they weren't in your staff report, but they're just like summarized here. And I'll start with the go over each one. The first one is that the proposed development is proportioned with size of the parcel. When we look at FAR, the considerations that we looked at in making the findings were that the minimum parcel size is twelve thousand square feet in the RH zoning district. And that would allow us a thirty-six hundred square foot house, but the subject parcel is almost half that size. A little more than half that size, six, at six thousand two hundred and four square feet. And the zoning allows for the twenty-four hundred square foot house. When you look at these two considerations, it's just that the, the required parking eats up a lot more of the house than with a house that would be allowed on a conforming parcel. And then the other consideration was that the requested floor area is two hundred and forty-four square feet. And that was considered to be relatively small. The lot coverage is, is a similar situation where the parcel size is, you know, about fifty percent of what is required. And then that the overage is three point two five percent and that, that would equate to a hundred and ninety-six square feet. And with the setbacks, the, the combined setback is approximately sixteen feet, where twenty feet is required. But it, it's true that, that on both sides, the, the bare minimum, the seven and a half, which is required in that combination are being met on, on each side. So this, this shows where the encroachment is on the setbacks. And then I have photos. So on this, this is the left side. This is what you would see on the left side. For where that, the house would encroach slightly in the setback. And then on the right side, because of the parcel shape of the adjacent parcel, you just have a play area for, that's there. Moving on to some of the other non-conforming use permit findings, all opportunities of to, to buy additional land to make the parcel more conforming failed either because the adjacent parcels were developed and could not allow any additional land to be deducted from their, their the parcel, some of them are substandard and then the parcel that is adjacent to them, the owners denied a request to purchase additional land and that, that correspondence is in the staff report. Numbers, or letter C, the proposed development is as nearly in conformance with zoning regulations as currently regulations currently in effect and as reasonably possible. For this, we, based on, you know, the discussion earlier about the requests being relatively minor and the parcel size being half of what is normally required. We were made that finding that the development will not be injurious to the community or or adjacent property owners. There were no issues from the reviewing agencies, no coastal resources. And the design was determined to be compatible with the surrounding residences. And E, that the use permit approval does not constitute granting of a special privilege. We looked at the fact that we grant home improvement exceptions rather easily in the cap, you know, as, as a minor exception that homeowners can use to get up to two hundred and fifty square feet of floor area and this request is for two hundred and forty-four square feet. The, the design of the house is a little bit problematic for an addition, the design. The home improvement exceptions are only offered after you have actually built the house. But in this case, with, based on this design, it is a little bit more problematic to do an addition to the house and, and maintain the same aesthetic that the applicants are trying to achieve. So because a home improvement exception is a relatively common solution for these kinds of overages. The fact that it's being granted slightly earlier than would normally possible is not necessarily a, a privilege that other people cannot obtain. Okay, and then the last one would be conformity with the grading ordinance and the grading has been reviewed by Public Works and also our Geotech staff and they have found that it complies with the grading ordinance. So the recommendation is that the planning commission approve the design review permit, non-conforming use permit and grading permit for file number PLN two thousand twenty one dash zero zero two nine, based on the subject and required findings and the conditions of approval and attachment A. So I will take any questions that you might have right now.
Okay, commissioners, do you have any questions, Mrs. Ketchum? That you're muted, you're muted.
Thanks. When was the, what's the date of the home improvement exception ordinance roughly?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Like, like back in the nineties or something, maybe?
I, I, you know, I can look it up, but I don't know.
That's, that's okay, just, it comes up, that's okay, just for my information, thanks. No other questions.
Mr. Hanson?
Good morning, Erica. I'm gonna stumble through and you can help me, because I'm just trying to get some, something in my head, some context. So, if, and it's all a bit based on SB nine. If the owner wanted to take full advantage of everything that is offered in SB nine, this would be smaller than that, correct?
SB nine does not allow exceptions.
Yes.
So they, they would still, yeah, they would, if they were just using that directly, they would need to comply with the zoning.
Okay, but they could put two units in and then two ADU units?
I, I believe with the parcel split.
Okay, but it could be done. I'm not saying this should be done, or I'm just trying to understand the consequences of things with these. And is my assumption correct?
I believe so. We have to look at every situation with SB nine. So in principle, you could subdivide a parcel and do two units and two units.
Okay.
Is that what your question is?
Yeah. So, um with this proposed unit, there's still room for an ADU, right?
Um, in, in, in theory, yes, they, they could have an ADU.
Okay.
SB nine or not, they could still have an ADU.
Or have an ADU.
Right.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the consequences of all this. Okay, um. I don't think I have any other questions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Gupta?
Thank you, Chair. Erica, I would like to commend you on the staff report and your presentation. I think your presentation was very organized and highlighted the important things on this project. So, I think you explained this, but I, my question is like on page two of your staff report, it says that the staff asked the applicant to modify the project to comply with the zoning regulations. And so they submitted a revised plan. So what was changed? And this revised plan date was December seventh of last year. So, could you kind of go over it again, that what was, what did they do in this revision?
There, there was, they, they had not intended to be over height, but originally the project was over height. So that was corrected and, and then by taking forty-four, they basically reduced the size of the garage. By, by doing that, then you would reduce both the, well, you reduce kind of all, and they also changed the front setback. So that originally the front setback did not comply. So the, the front setback complied with the change. And then by reducing the forty-four square feet, you, you reduce a little bit the ask for the floor area and lot coverage. That's reduced a little bit.
Okay. So how big is the home? I couldn't get a good feel for how many bedrooms, how many?
Uh, I think, I think there were three bedrooms. There might have been four. Let me see. Honestly, I, I don't, let's, so they got.
There are so many drawings that.
Yeah, there were a lot of drawings. They have, on the first floor, they have a guest bedroom and then they have a master bedroom. And so they have three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms, okay. And often, do you know what is the square footage of each story, like first floor, second floor?
I did not include, I didn't include in the see. Sorry, I didn't print out a whole staff report here. So, um, on the, the, oh, so the, the the lot coverage number is the first floor, because that's the footprint.
Okay.
And then, you know, the second floor has the deck. So that doesn't count towards floor area and then the garage. So that's, it's about, it looks like it's about maybe four hundred square feet. I mean, sorry, maybe eight hundred square feet less on the top floor.
On the top floor, okay. And did you say garage, garage is not included in the total square?
The garage is included, so the garage is four hundred square feet, yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking at that table.
Right.
That's there. And one, one clarification from that table. In case, I think you had some, some information about that even in your presentation. It says that maximum building floor area is twenty-four hundred square feet?
Correct.
And is, is that a given number in the regulations or how?
Yes, it is. So when a parcel is substandard in the RH zoning district, they guarantee that you can build a house at twenty-four hundred square feet.
Okay, okay, because I was trying to see thirty percent.
Yeah, you are allowed to exceed the percentages.
Okay, okay.
Up to twenty-four hundred.
So, so up to twenty-four hundred can be built? And if the lot is bigger, they can build a bigger one, is that?
Right, if you had, if you had a twenty thousand square foot lot, then you get the full thirty percent.
Full thirty percent, okay. All right, great. Okay, so I have basically two more questions. One is, one is, is this going to be an all-electric home?
Maybe the, the applicants are here, maybe they can, I think with the new zoning, I don't, I mean, the new building regulations, I don't think they have a choice.
That's correct.
Okay, okay, great. And is solar, maybe this is also for the applicant about solar heating? Because they may not have brought that up yet.
Yeah, you'd have to talk to the applicants about that.
Okay, okay. And in attachment A, one of the conditions of approval, it said that the work of any kind on the parcel can, can continue from seven AM to six PM on Monday through Friday. Isn't that kind of early to start and wake up all the neighborhood?
Those are, that's, that's the county ordinance, so that's standard throughout the county. That, that's tied to the environmental health noise ordinance and those are the regulations for the countywide. So we just, we don't change those.
So they can start as early as seven AM because, yeah, okay. I thought on the others, we didn't start that early, but I may be wrong. Okay. And that is all I have. Thank you, Erica.
You're welcome.
All right, thanks, Erica. And thanks, Ms. Luhman, I mean, Gupta. Does the applicant want to speak on their project?
Actually, Commissioner, Chair, I do see the applicant on the call. Let me go ahead and transfer him over.
Yeah.
Give me one second.
Good morning. Good morning.
Can you hear me here?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. I would also love to screen.
Yeah, you can go ahead and do so at this point. Let me go ahead and take, actually, let me go ahead and take this off and then you can go ahead and share your screen.
Thank you.
Okay. Dan, can we speak for one minute first?
Yes, please go for it.
Where's Kate? She should be doing the speaking, yeah. Kate, if you can hear me, can you join as a panelist?
She's coming. Second. There you go.
All right, her head, Kate.
She seems to be muted and she unmuted herself.
Hello, good morning. Can you hear and see me?
Yeah.
Awesome. Good morning, everyone. My name is Kate Muscarian Rogers. My husband is on the line as well, Ben Muscarian Rogers. I'll be doing the talking for just one minute before I pass it on to Dan, who's our architect. Erica, it's a pleasure to put a face to an email address and it's, it's great to see you all. We've been looking forward to today for, for a bit. And we moved into this house in September twenty twenty when we bought this property. We really love the Emerald Hills area and when we saw this house, we could just see the potential of living here. And this house came with, with approved house plans and, and so that encouraged us to, to look at what we can do, what the potential is for, for a potential home for us as well. And so that encouraged us to, to look at what we can do, what the potential is for, for a potential home for us as well. Um, we have, ever since we moved in, we have connected with our neighbors around us, on the left side, the right side and behind us. And when the plans passed through design review, we spent some time with them to walk them through the plans. And I believe one of the neighbors has, uh, submitted a written, a positive written, um, a report or, or support for the plans. And, uh, we have received positive comments from, uh, the Brill family on the left, um, the Ross family on the right, and then Jay and Chantel uh, in the back as well. And we are, we, our dream was to build a modern, sustainable home. Um, and we have been working with Dan and his team for quite some time now, and we're very pleased with what they have done, uh, to build a home that really fits in the neighborhood. Um, that is full of nature and, uh, and, and greens. So with, uh, without further ado, I want to pass it on to Dan, who's going to walk you through a lot more details about the house. But we are very excited about it. And, uh, thank you for the opportunity to talk today.
Sure. Thank you.
All right. Good morning, and thanks for the opportunity to present here. I'm Dan Spiegel, and one of the principals of SAW, and we're the architects and landscape architects for this project. And we've been fortunate enough to have an opportunity to work with Ben and Kate on the design of their new home over the last year and a half. The four thirty-four summit site is an interesting lot. It's tucked into its curving street here with gradual topography that affords long views towards the back of the property over in this direction. Um, but it's also considerably unusually constrained. Um, it's a smaller lot than most of the ones adjacent to it. And this has consequences based on the, you know, normal ways in which F A R is calculated. As you can see, each of the adjacent lots are significantly bigger despite oftentimes having similar street frontages. Um, and each of the properties, uh, on all sides around are allowed to build substantially more square footage than, um, what is being requested within even this exception, um, for this project proposal. Uh, as Kate, uh, mentioned as well, there was a previously approved set of plans for an expansion of the existing house that was in fact, bigger than the exception that we are requesting at this point here. Um, as Kate mentioned too, they've been quite attached to the neighborhood, and we've drawn from a number of examples of neighborhood architecture in the broader region as well. But adapting it to make it particular to this lot and to Ben and Kate and their lives. These are some photos of the existing residence. As you can see towards the rear, there's a bit of a slope down. Um, and there's currently, um, a slightly non-conforming accessory garage structure in the rear that would be removed as a part of this project. So, uh, while accessories are allowed different setback, uh, requirements than main structures, the overall sort of conformance within the idea of what the zoning envelope might be, um, is actually significantly improved. Um, here are some photographs along the street front. As you're familiar with, one of the other things that is unusual about the site here is you can see is that the property line is in fact set back fairly significantly from the street front as well. This is not always the case on, uh, all the houses around. And so, uh, by meeting this twenty-foot front setback, um, we're actually, uh, set back further from the street than what might be. The idea of the house is around this kind of integration of the interior and the exterior and about making a silhouette of a profile of a house that would be narrowed from the front of the street and impact the neighbors' views minimally. So on the one hand, we are asking for a slightly larger house, but on the other hand, we're trying to present a house that that behaves as though it's smaller, that the profile is cut back from the front and from the back to minimally impact the neighbors. And in the area over here where you can see, uh, the setback exists, the, the setback encroachment would exist. Uh, that's the lowest portion of this house, and it's also pulled furthest away from the neighboring house as well, so as to mitigate the, the risks. It's organized around a series of private spaces that are, uh, second level and then public spaces in the ground floor. And then this courtyard in the middle that ties everything together through this integration with the, uh, with the outdoors, with nature, with the landscape. And that just houses really about a kind of profile of sustainability and integration with the California climate. It's also oriented in a way which responds to the kind of irregular shapes of the plot as well as taking advantage of uh, the orientation of sun and natural light, uh, moving out of the way of large existing trees and also trying to harness some of these views towards the back. So again, the, uh, some different images of the approach of the house, this again is the existing house that's set back from the street. And then in plan, the existing main house to be removed. This is the garage structure that's tucked way towards the back of the property line and over towards the side setback. And you'll find that there's also a slight encroachment, uh, in the existing residence towards this property line over here. Um, an overlay of the proposed and the existing, uh, house, this here is the driveway. Uh, the overall paved area is being significantly reduced because it used to be that a driveway would take you all the way back to the garage and back. And now, uh, that area can be used for landscaping and other things like this. Um, these are these large, uh, protected trees towards the back that we're trying to, uh, organize the house to stay out of the way of, and in fact, to celebrate. Uh, a few smaller trees are being removed, which are in poor health and with the sort of blessing of the arborists. Uh, and some additional ones will be planted in their stead. So in the existing house, this is technically an accessory structure, so it's not true non-conformance, the garage back here. But you can see that the side setbacks are actually, uh, also not in conformance in the existing case. And so we're not asking for a greater non-conformity that currently exists. And then the, the main pressure on this setback here, as Erica mentioned, we did push back the front to meet, uh, 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 planning staff's request to meet the front's, uh, setback. The main non-conformance here is that we don't have much flexibility in reshaping the garage. There are minimum size standards that need to be met. And we're organizing the front of the house towards the front of the street, and that puts a little bit of pressure on this corner to slightly flare out. Uh, but as viewed from the front profile of the street and house, everything would appear to be within the setback as it lays at the front. Um, so the first floor is, uh, a little under thirteen hundred square feet of living area, seventeen hundred thirty-three with the garage. And it's meant to be a series of spaces that are organized around these exterior courtyards. So each of these living spaces has windows out, uh, on multiple sides to the exterior while still maintaining privacy um, for both the neighbors and for Ben and Kate and their home. The upstairs is a relatively compact floor plan. There's a bedroom on one side, the master bedroom, and then a guest bedroom over towards the other side. Um, they're organized to be looking out in this kind of long direction here, again, protecting, um, privacy all around. As you can see, the kind of proposed massing steps up so that, um, rather than creating like a large unified wall at the front of the property line, we're trying to stay low and stay low in the direction of the view so that from the street, um, you know, the entirety of the kind of like expansive this neighborhood and the hills around is not, you know, deprived from the passerby. Uh, we've also sort of nestled the kind of two-story mass up towards that, uh, backyard effectively that's because of the regularity of the site layout over here, um, and have the tallest portion of the house responding to the tallest part of, part of the topography. Um, these are the elevations. This is the courtyard in the middle here. So the, again, the tallest part is then set way back from this other portion of the, um, neighboring house. We're using the kind of tapering of the roof lines in order to kind of break the mass downs further and respond to opportunities for light and air. Um, and then using additional landscape screening to, uh, to, uh, nestle this kind of volume into the hillside and make it, you know, a, a part of the, uh, natural landscape and topography. The existing hardscape in the site is twenty-six hundred square feet, proposed is less than half of that. And then additional features of this kind of pitch roof that falls down and drawing from contextual materials. The entry sequence with the kind of natural warm woods that will weather and then, you know, this even from the front door view towards the exterior all the way through the house. Courtyards that the primary living spaces are organized around. And then the living room, dining room that opens on both sides of the landscape. From the backyard is the photography steps up and then sort of vacating the site as it moves down towards the back, following the building mass kind of following the natural photography of the site. And then the way in which it screens behind these large oak trees from the properties behind sort of minimizing any sort of visual impact, especially, uh, in relation to the, the general and typical volume of massive Jason homes. Uh, the material profile is meant to kind of weather naturally, be sustainable and be contextual with the neighborhood. And then landscaping as well, using natives and additional trees to, um, to pick up where the ones that are being removed in fair and poor condition. This is one for removal. Then these will be replaced. And then, you know, we've noted similar, um, you know more about this than we do, but we've noted similar sort of exceptions granted in the past for various reasons. This one seemed important, and while we know that it's not legally binding because it is a different project proposal. This was for renovation of the existing subject property, but this was the exception. It was previously approved as one of those homeowner or home improvement exceptions, uh, in the past for the subject parcel. Um, which is, uh, fairly significantly bigger than what we're proposing with the new construction here. And you can see from the front, the sort of massiveness of the previously approved proposal versus the kind of sculpted down, um, volume mass profile of the proposal. That is it. Thank you. Be happy to take any questions.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Um, do commissioners have, uh, questions for the applicant or the owner? Uh, Commissioner Gupta?
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I have, um, a couple of questions primarily. Uh, one was about, um, uh, the sol- solar heating. Are there plans of using solar heating? Is that conducive to getting sun there?
Yes. So we do have good access for solar, and we will be using solar electric, solar PV. Um, there is a transition away from gas, as you all know, at this point, and, um, there's a real ambition for Ben and Kate, uh, to make this as sustainable a property as possible. And the thing we're leaning towards now is using solar with an air-to-water heat pump so that, uh, we can use, um, radiant hydronic um, throughout the house and power it as much as possible through solar or electric.
Great, great. And, um, do the owners intend to live in this home or is this for, uh, selling?
So we intend to live there for sure. We love it here.
Okay, great, great. Looks like a good design, uh, very contemporary. Are the neighboring homes also contemporary styling in style?
I would not say so.
Yeah, the immediately adjacent neighbors are not. They're the sort of kind of a variety of different sort of like Northern California vernaculars. There are some homes of this sort of style within the neighborhood. We are trying to do a kind of combination where it is contemporary in many ways, but also kind of references pitched roofs and the sort of vernacular forms from even farmhouses that have, you know, out of this landscape since mid eighteen hundreds, basically. There's a William Worcester house that we're really interested in. It's the Gregory farmhouse, not too far from here, that actually has a very similar profile in many ways. It's kind of low, sort of gated wall and then, uh, a sort of miniature vertical tower type thing in the front, which is, uh, you know, one of the kind of like that's of the kind of vernacular traditions.
Okay. There was one more question. I'm just looking at my notes here. I'll, I'll come back to it. I can't find my other question. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Gupta. Uh, Commissioner Hanson?
I have no questions.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Ketchum?
No questions from me. Thanks.
Okay, um, I don't have any questions at this moment. Um, I think now we can open the, the, to public participation. Um, Janet, can you allow people to come in?
All right. Thank you. Yes. Um, we're now opening public comment for item number four. If your hand is raised, your name will be called. Right now, I only see two people on the attendee side. And so if, uh, you want to speak on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand. And so I don't see any hands raised, Chair. You can proceed.
Okay, so seeing that we don't have anybody from the public wanting to participate, uh, on this item, um, I will move, uh, to close, uh, per public participation.
Uh, Chair?
Yeah.
I just, just, uh, found my question.
Yeah, no problem. We're gonna, yeah, we can do, we can do it now. So anyway, at this time, public participation is now closed. Uh, go, go ahead, Mr. Gupta.
Uh, okay, so the question I had was, um, as part of the tree replacement, it had, uh, you, uh, there were plans to plant four trees, four fifteen-gallon trees. And it said that two will be oak. Any in, information about what the other two will be?
That is a good question. I, I do believe we have a proposal of it somewhere in the drawings. I don't have it top of mind. I think, um, there is some development of that to be determined still, um.
Okay.
But, um, you know.
Just curiosity more than anything else. Yes.
Sure.
Okay, that, that is all I have. Thank you.
I may, um, what we're considering, uh, Dan, is, is more on the fruit trees side, Ms. Gupta.
Okay, okay.
But we have.
Idea. Yeah. Okay.
All right. If there are no more questions for the, um, the applicant or, um, the staff, um, I would like to consider that we do our, uh, our deliberation at this time. I will call on Commissioner Hanson.
Yeah, I, I like the design. I like how, you know, most of the lots are deeper in this neighborhood, but the houses that are sitting uh, right up front, you know, don't, uh, look either bigger or within context. So I like how this house sits within it. I like the orientation. I I think a lot of positives going with, I don't see the exceptions being, you know, true exceptions, you know, the, um, they are within the noise level for me. I, I, I see, uh, unless someone could point something out to me, uh, why I'm, I'm in support of this.
Great. Uh, Commissioner Ketchum?
Uh, I think it looks like a creative, well-thought-out design. It would be an asset to the neighborhood.
Great. Um, Commissioner Gupta?
Um, I, I like the design and I'm very, uh, happy about the owners, uh, considering the privacy of the neighbors. Not trying to block their sunlight or, or topology of the lot. Uh, it looks like a good design to me. I'm in support of that.
Uh, great. Thank you. Um, I too, uh, like the design. I think you guys have taken, um, you know, a good amount of time to think it through. I'm well aware of, uh, the neighborhood. I built some houses in the area myself. Um, so I, I am well aware of what's in general in the neighborhood. I think this will definitely be a good addition. And I know there were some concerns from, from some of the neighbors, uh, as far as the, the height of massing. But, you know, I think we, we allowed a bigger house before to, to be, uh, uh, put on that lot before. So it's great that you actually spend the time to actually reduce it, uh, and, and make it fit into the environment. So with that, um, I am, uh, in favor of this, uh, project. So I will, uh, uh, consider a motion. consider a motion for this item at this point.
May I make a motion?
Yes, please.
I move that we approve the design review permit, nonconforming use permit, and grading permit for county file number PLN twenty twenty-one zero 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 two nine, based on and subject to the required findings and conditions of approval listed in attachment A of the staff.
I will second that.
We have a motion and second, Janet, can you do the roll call, please?
Sure, Commissioner Gupta. You're muted.
Gupta, you're muted.
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Chair Ramirez.
Hi.
Thank you, motion passes.
All right, congratulations, your project is approved, some motion passes four two zero. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can move on to our next item, which is correspondence and other matters.
Yes, good morning, Chairman Ramirez and Commissioners. The only correspondence to report is the one that you considered in relation to item four, so no other correspondence to report today.
All right, consideration of study session for next meeting.
Yes, so last meeting, Commissioner Ketchum asked about the long-range work program. We're not able to pull it together for next meeting, but we are planning on bringing it to the commission for the second meeting in March, so I look forward to having this study session with you at that time. But as far as next meeting goes, no study session recommended. We have two items currently on the agenda, one being the after the fact approval of the domestic well, that was continued from today's agenda, and also a new single-family residence in Miramar.
Great, we move to item number seven, director's report.
Certainly, so the only thing I have to report to you today is that yesterday we received an appeal of the planning commission's decision to deny the off-leash dog pilot project. The Department of Parks and Recreation filed the appeal indicating their desire to pursue approval of a permit for Quarry Park only. So they understood the commissioner's concerns regarding use at Pillar Point and are going to be seeking the board's authorization to amend the pilot project to be for Quarry Park only, and to also ask for their approval of the coastal development permit. So be happy to answer any questions the commissioners may have about that or anything else.
The commissioners have questions on that? Anybody?
Yeah, yes, so, so what are they going to have to go through for this off-leash dog pilot program?
Yes, so as you recall, the Board of Supervisors authorized and directed parks to pursue off-leash, the permits required for the off-leash dog pilot program, and they directed parks to pursue those permits for both Quarry Park and the Pillar Point plus. And based on the planning commission's decision to deny a permit for both parks, they've submitted an appeal to the board, which basically stays the planning commission's decision on the permit applications. And the Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing on the application and on the Parks Department's request to amend the pilot program to be for Quarry Park only. So that, that will be a forthcoming public hearing, the date still to be determined. And at that time, the board will make the decision on the coastal development permit. The board's decision on that permit will be appealable to the California Coastal Commission as well, so like many actions of the planning commission, this is an appealable action. And in cases when appeals are filed, which simply involves submitting an appeal form with your basis for your appeal and the appeal fee, then the, the matter scheduled for board consideration, and the board makes the final decision. Final unless it's appealable to the Coastal Commission, of course, and then if someone wants to take it one step further, that process is available.
Great.
Thank you.
So we, so next we have commissioners' updates and other questions, other stuff, anybody? Raise your hand and I'll let you, okay. Seeing that we don't have any more questions, I'm going to say that this meeting is adjourned.
So. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good day.
I'll see you next time.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.